All the meeting to order.
Yes.
Yes.
Henson.
There.
Kelly, there, Mormon.
Here.
Elsaback.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
There are no changes.
Go to approve. Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Ho ho ho, Kelly.
Yes.
Elsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Right. Number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A Ames Regional Economic Alliance Third Quarter Update, Ryan Horn.
Leader. Hello, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity to share the third quarter report. Uh, let me start by saying, uh, what a pleasure and honor it's been to start in this new position. Uh, the number of great people around that I'm getting to work with, uh, a tremendous number of projects, great work was happening. And, uh, you know, that's a testament to everybody in this room and a lot of people in Boone County. So it's kind of a pleasure and I really appreciate it. Uh, we have provided the third quarter report, uh, update, uh, to the council and everybody. I'll highlight a couple of items, the, the rice grant that y'all know about, uh, the Rattino Project and, and getting some researches there. Um, the Catalyst Grant, which is a great, uh, opportunity. Along with that, some information on the inner city visit of Fargo, but I gotta go on that. So does some others get to go along on that, uh, great opportunity, a groundbreaking with Kating property. And then, uh, some other items, uh, there on the, the back of the page. And, uh, just want to make sure we provide you with the information and see if you have any questions or comments.
Right. Give up a good word.
Thank you very much. Very much a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, B, public hearing for the consideration of the sale of property located at two oh three thirteenth street, Boone, Iowa. Are there any written comments? Are there any public comments? Uh, seeing none, this public hearing is closed and we have resolution, uh, thirty-two eighty-two authorizing the sale, real estate at two oh three thirteenth street and issuance of a quitclaim deed.
Still move?
Second.
Uh, please call the roll.
Ho ho ho, Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
C, I'd, uh, thirty-two eighty-three resolution determining the necessity and upsetting dates, uh, of consultation and a public hearing of, on a proposed southwest Boone, housing urban renewal plan for a proposed urban renewal area in the city of Boone, state of Iowa.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
All right, item four, public comments for items not on the agenda. Have one?
Yep, I did.
Yeah, that's great. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. My name is Drew Denver. I live at eleven thirty-nine Aldridge. Uh, and I saw that the street lights for downtown were up for discussion. I'm not sure if there's public comment time for that. So I just wanted to share a couple of, um, comments my perspective. I, I really appreciate, uh, compliment Mormon sharing that online that, that that was gonna be on the agenda. I personally am in favor of turning the lights back on and going back to the street lights because, um, backing up out of the, um, out of the corner, back spaces, um, there's the stop signs or the flashing red. So it's kind of a constant flow of traffic. And, um, you're already kind of backing up somewhat blindly diagonally. And what I liked about the stoplights is that it has a break in the traffic. So that allows just a little bit longer break where you can pull out rather than if you've got four or five cars coming, you get just enough confidence to pull out and somebody hogs each other. Um, and then you have to pull back in and that can happen a few times. So, um, more constant flow of traffic. I, I don't, uh, like that. Um, I do appreciate that at a red light, you can stop and look at our revitalized downtown a little bit longer. Um, you can, you can sit there and, um, take a few seconds to look around and see what the shops are doing. Whereas I've found that at the blinking red lights, I'm just so focused on traffic, uh, which is a good thing, right? But I sit there, I look left, red, and I just go to the next one. I, I don't take in the shops at all. Um, next, I, uh, I just don't like the look of flashing red lights. I'm not sure if we remove the stop signs or whatnot, but it just kind of looks like an ongoing construction area. Or like there's a project going on, um, and, or like we, we just don't know how to use those lights or something. I just don't like the appearance of it. Um, I think that the lights are a bit more intuitive for people, um, rather than a stop sign, which I appreciate that there was some public, um, reminders of how to use four-way stop signs. Uh, but if we have to remind people, then it maybe it's not so intuitive as regular stoplights. And I like that the pedestrians also have a crosswalk when we have, um, the, the normal street lights, green, yellow, and red. Finally, I worry about the financial, um, aspect of taking down lights that seem to be functioning fine. I wonder, uh, you know, the cost of that, um, and, uh, that's all. Those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Uh, yes, Tom?
I would like to continue on his comments. I too am opposed to the flashing lights. And, uh, for an eighty-four-year-old man or, uh, I don't know, you don't think quite as fast, I find myself stopping for the red light. Coming from the south, stopping for the red light, look, stopping for the red light, stop. Eleventh story, the light's red, stop, run right through the red light. Cause that doesn't, that's, that's a signal up there.
Was it Tom?
Maybe they didn't come in the other way, cause I could see the red light flashing ahead of me. And it came from Story Street Town, pulled up to the, the light was red at eleventh story, I just stopped and went through. Uh, I, I think that signals overall would be nice to have back at every intersection. Uh, my son, Bob, I think some of you know my son Bob, he got bumped crossing the crosswalk at eighth and story because a woman stopped for the red light and then just took right off and he was in the crosswalk. He's a big, big man. He didn't get knocked down or anything, but then the lady rolled her window down and scolded him for being in the crosswalk. So I think the red light, green, green, red light signals are much more appropriate.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
What do you say?
He was saying that he wants the regular stoplights.
Item five, reports of standing committees.
He was in the crosswalk.
Administration Employee Relations.
Some lady opened up her window and yelled at Bob, cause he was in the crosswalk.
The only thing I want to mention is, um, once you start thinking about, uh, doing, uh, appreciation luncheon for the staff in probably November. And so, um, we've done something last year and start thinking about that and we'll, um, get, start planning on it, see what we want to do.
B, Public Safety, uh, Hillsback.
No report, Connor.
C, Utility, Angstrom.
I just want to say that we had our, uh, special meeting last Thursday to talk about the water studies we had done and I appreciate all of you guys being there for that. I think we got a lot accomplished there. So that's all I have.
You can watch this.
E, uh, sorry, D, Economic Development, Mormon?
Uh, no report, your honor.
Uh, Six Department Report, Building Official Dave.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, had a very busy October with ongoing projects and, uh, new ones started. I got three items for you tonight. Uh, first one is going to be, uh, request for approval of a site plan for Lion Energy. Uh, Leonard, Lion Energy is looking to build a substation, uh, south highway thirty, um, just east of Crown Flare Drive.
The Lion Energy want to put up a, a plant.
Uh, the substation's gonna go down in the, uh, bottom left corner there, uh, to help serve Boone and other assets around here.
Crown Flare Drive.
City engineers looked at it, um, did not need a stormwater plan, uh, for the, uh, size. We took this to planning and zoning on, uh, September fourteenth and committee members, uh, unanimously, uh, voted to uh, move forward with this project. Tonight, we just asked for a motion to approve.
Go move. Second.
Please call the roll.
Elsaback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Second item, um, is going to be a request, um, to approve the final plat for the very place. Uh, this one, as you know, is across the street from McDonald's and eleven, twelve hundred block of South Marshall. They have submitted all the needed items per subdivision ordinance one seventy-seven twelve. Um, we've taken this to, uh, again, to planning and zoning on the fourteenth. They've left over all the items and unanimously, uh, agreed to move forward with this. Uh, this will be in, um, associated with resolution thirty-two eighty-six, uh, later on tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have. Looks good.
In the consent agenda, so we won't.
Oh, don't need to.
That later.
Thank you. Um, and third and final is we are looking to approve a request for a preliminary plat for Oak Park subdivision. Uh, this will be a new subdivision, southeast corner of South Marshall and West Park Avenue. This will be all single-family homes. Um, within that, the, you know, within this preliminary plat, um, we are looking at, uh, approving, uh, street designations, uh, the preliminary plat. And the preliminary plat in this case also is serving as a site plan. Uh, we've had all the elements needed for the site plan. Um, and we've got a s- stormwater plan approval from the city engineer on this too. Again, uh, on the fourteenth of September, we took this to planning and zoning. We voted to approve and, and move forward to council. And again, this is, uh, associated with resolution thirty-two ninety-one later on. Be happy to answer any questions you guys have. Questions on this one?
Yeah, this is, this is a really exciting project, so.
May, maybe give a little more detail about number of units and things like that, so folks know.
Yeah, I think, I think we're at fifty, I'd have to look up here, fifty-three lots, um, on this, all single-family homes. Um, higher end, very nice project here. Um, we're gonna have one road that will eventually become public roadway. Uh, excuse me, two roads on this one, um. It's just a great project.
It is a great project.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you.
B, City Attorney, Jim?
No report, your honor.
Uh, C, Director of Public Works, Waylon?
Thank you, your honor. Public work staff's been fairly busy over the last couple of weeks. I don't know if you've seen the Nixal notices and stuff like that, but we've had a lot of, uh, utility failures. Nothing to do with the age or structure of the pipe. The ground's very, very dry and moving. Um, if you guys get any reports, you know, of, of something, please let Bill or myself know about something. Um, we had four sanitary sewer failures, uh, and two, two water failures. Sunday morning, we had a water main brick. Uh, talked to some of the communities around and they're all experiencing the same thing. The grounds, it's just that time, the ground's contracting, moving. It happens, so just letting you know, we're handling them as they come up and as soon as they come up and the guys, staff put in about four hours Sunday morning to fix that one, um, Sunday morning yet and responded immediately. Everybody came together really quick for me. Went great. Thank you.
You're waiting, thanks, Jamie.
Uh, yeah, I'll call up. You can bring rain on. I'll take three quarters of an inch every day for something else.
Hey, uh, D, Library, Jamie?
Also package, I included the, um, library in your port for fiscal year twenty-four, jam packed with a whole lot of stuff. Um, so I guess the, the one thing I do want to say is every year I kind of use this in your port to go pace a lot of our stories, highlight statistics and insight into our current status and future direction. Um, as always, one of my main goals is to really meaningful impact through library services and programs. Um, the one thing that I was at a board meeting before this, so, um, I also kind of talked to the library board about it. Something we are very, um, focused on is determining how we can be, be more responsive to our community. So, um, as you know, we have just submitted our work, we're working on our long-range plan. So a lot of our, um, data from that survey will kind of give us a good, um, direction for the next five years. So a lot of those goals, um, you'll see come out next year. Um, the impact that kind of go over a lot of our technology, um, goals. We did do, um, a workshop through the American Library Association that was grant-funded, um, for a lot of our seniors. Um, we still have some money left in there, so we will be continuing to do that, um, hopefully in the spring. Um, something that I like to highlight, a lot of people don't know is we, we do check out hotspots. Um, that's been very popular. Um, people check them out for two weeks. It's a really great service. I think that helps, um, a lot of the people who are unable to afford, um, data or on any of the wifi stuff. Um, I do also want to let you know, we've spent a considerable amount of money, um, digitizing the Boon's Republican. Um, so from the late eighteen hundreds to nineteen twenty-six, that's all digitized, available on our website. We also microfilmed and digitized two thousand seven to Kurt to two thousand twenty-three. So a lot of that stuff, if you're looking for, um, historical, anything like that, you know, we have a lot of people contact us business-wise, looking for, um, information about their historical part of their, you know, uh, business. Um, they want pictures, they want to know, um, stuff from the past. And so we do a lot of that research, but now it's available online for anybody in the entire world to, to, uh, look at, which is really good for, um, people who research. Um, the other thing I do want to mention is Activating Community Voices is a group that's been around for a while, but it's about sixteen partners here locally in our community. And we are planning to do a survey on loneliness and social, social isolation. Um, we're gonna get some community input and data on how we can address that through, um, programs. And, um, in the next year, we'll be actually doing the program. So I did want to mention that, that it'll be coming out. Um, the goal of that group is really to, um, foster inclusive and engaged communities. So, um, the next page includes a lot of statistics, which I do like to focus on, but um, I'm more about a lot of the stories, which is the next page. Um, those are actual stories from our patrons. Um, things that, um, they've experienced at our library, things they love about our library, um. I also kind of focus on our grants and donations. In fiscal year twenty-four, we accomplished a lot of important strategic plans. Um, we spent about sixty, a little over sixty-four thousand in extra funding. Uh, without this funding, we wouldn't be able to do our book bike, adventure pass, technology classes, um, educational kids programming and summer, um, through, and summer, the summer library program throughout, um, the year. Story walk, books for wellness visits at the Boone Community Hospital. We've spent a lot of money on Pula, which nobody knows about it. It's, um, it's a great service, but it does cost money. Um, and a lot of that, all of that was funded through donations and our memorial fund. So, um, and then the digital, um, the digital Blue News Republican on our website. Um, I do want to give the, um, last page some highlights because, um, all this isn't possible without our great staff. Um, without you, without our library board, without our volunteers, without the Friends of the Erickson Public Libraries. Um, so I do want to thank you. Also, I should give a shout out to our community partners, organizations, and businesses. We try to partner quite a bit. We are a smaller staff, but we are able to do a lot because of our partners. So are there any questions?
I think it's really interesting to hear, um, of the gifts and grants that you received, the sixty-four thousand and all the additional things that you did with that. And so I think it's important for, you know, to kind of remember that the library is really a good place to give donations.
Um, I also want to mention that a lot, libraries have evolved a lot. It's not just books. So you guys do a great job with their programming and all the services you offer. So thank you.
For all the great work. Thanks for the board, too. Hey, E, uh, Park Director, Mike?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, a follow-up on Franklin Park. Uh, it is in, uh, we had kids in there before. We even had the swings hung. So they're all hung. We're still waiting for that last apparatus. Uh, it should come, um, next week, I believe, and then hopefully get it installed first part of November. Uh, I want to thank you guys for your contribution to that as well. So we're, uh, we're working on, uh, refurbishing the rest of the park. We just put in some lighting, uh, LED lighting up there and we're gonna be having, uh, foundation will be putting in for some benches, upgrade the benches up there. Uh, try to spruce up the whole place. The pool, they've been working very diligently, trying to get it sandblasted and prepped for the new paint. I don't know if it'll be Mother Nature. The, uh, temperatures really dictate what they can do. If not, it'll still be hopefully completed by May first. Uh, we did sign, uh, outdoor image for our hazard tree contract. And, uh, they'll be removing twenty-two trees for twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and with that, we've, we had a pretty significant, uh, tree failure. And with this dry weather, that tends to be a common incident with trees after a long stretch of dry weather. They just all of a sudden drop branches. It's kind of scary, but it does happen.
Was that the one on story?
Pardon me?
Is that the one on story?
Yeah, that is. And we've had some in the park as well. I just thought I'd relay that, relay that to everybody that it is common for that to happen.
I heard you had.
Too. It wasn't fairly with me.
Yeah, crushed a car.
And a lot of them.
And landed on a house, too. I heard you had some vandalism at.
Oh, yeah. Franklin had, uh, a little bit of spray paint on the, the little placard sign. Pretty frustrating.
Yeah.
You guys got right after it and cleaned it up.
Yeah, yeah, it came off fairly easy.
Yeah.
We got lucky. Nothing else was vandalized, so. Thank goodness.
That's some fun equipment there. I may or may not have tried some out myself.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of.
You have stuff. Yeah, they like it a lot. American Ninja Warrior stuff, is that, yeah.
Right.
And what do you call that? The, I mean, it's a kind of a trail or a?
Like an obstacle course.
An obstacle course?
You go up one, head to the east, it starts on the west, heads to the east, you turn to the north and you finish. The last one is horrible.
Very cool. They got a little bell at the top of one of them.
I wouldn't drive.
Good, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, app Recreation Director, Nate?
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, an update, uh, of things that are going on, kind of put together a few things that, uh, we can look at and achieve kind of in the interim with, without certain things happening and with certain things happening, things that are, uh, achievable. And, uh, I, I do have to give a lot of credit to all the civic groups and sports clubs and the citizens that I've met with. They've really, I always ask, you know, is, what are the, what are the barriers to what, what's happening here? Are there any holes that we can help? Or are there any things we can do as a city to recreation better here or, or help it out? So, um, with that, I'm not gonna read all the people I've met with and all the civic groups I've met with, but there have been a lot of them. And there's a lot more to, to still get to, and I hope to get to them very soon. Um, but, uh, just having a lot of good feedback with those folks. Uh, some of the ideas that we've kind of come up with, and I have to give Jamie credit for, um, this one and Chris Blocker as well, uh, possibility of doing movies on the green. Uh, that's, that is just the title I made up, so that's not in stone or anything, but showing, showing a, a movie possibly outdoors here. I don't know if we're gonna have enough time this year to get that done. There is, there are some costs, uh, with the licensing of a movie. So, uh, that, that I think is, uh, very attainable and partnering with the, the folks at the library, uh, to get that done. Looked at about every city I've been with, there is a mayor's run for the trails or for recreation, or we could call it the mayor and county run. Whatever you want to do, um, we can do things like that, just community engagement, having, uh, featuring a park, rail system, things like that, uh, having a five K. I like to call them bun runs, so we don't have people elbowing coming around the corner, but, um, that's something I think very, very achievable for us. Um, another, uh, I had a meeting with the Pioneer Senior Center last week and just talking to them about how we might, uh, feature, uh, seniors in recreation and, uh, a really, you know, straightforward one to kind of get us off the ground. Senior Fun Nights is what I have to call them. There's probably a better name. But, uh, just getting together, playing games, um, socializing, uh, to that point that, uh, Jamie did talk about. I learned a lot about that on my previous stops, that there is a kind of an isolation factor, uh, coming out of an endemic, that, uh, seniors especially were hit with that. So that's another, uh, item. Um, also looked at flag football. Is there age groups that we could possibly introduce this to, uh, younger ages especially? Um, trying to get them involved before they join the, the football program and tackle and stuff. And just introducing it, very introductory, relatively focused. Um, along those lines, blast ball as well. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. It's like a easier T-ball, but it's like a T-ball. The first base makes noises when you run and jump on it. This is for little ones, very, I probably wouldn't be very good at it either, but, uh, for, for the little ones, it makes noise, just introduces and very social, very, very social.
Blast ball?
Blast ball. You jump on the base, blast, yeah. Makes a noise, it's kind of fun. Uh, it's, it's a really good thing and it's very achievable. I was at, uh, the park board meeting last Monday. Uh, didn't ask for anything specific, but you know, recreational activities in some of our green spaces, uh, they seem to be very supportive of that. Uh, then, uh, probably too, too late for this one, pickleball tournament. We have a thriving, passionate pickleball community here, as everyone does. Uh, trying to get that off the ground and, uh, work that into a schedule where we can, uh, have a, a good time with that. Uh, then kind of the, the last thing, uh, I wanted to discuss is in speaking with some of my counterparts in Nevada, there is something called the, uh, Central Iowa Recreation League. I do have a handout on it. This is just a FYI information. If you want to take one, you don't have to. And it involved the cities of Ames, Baxter, Tolo, Nesco, I know these are school districts as well, Collins, Maxwell, Gilbert, Oxley, Nevada, Roland Story, South half. And, uh, in speaking with Nevada about other things, we kind of, I didn't really know about this that well. And, uh, Rhonda over in Nevada let me know that this was really born out of, uh, not everybody can be in a super competitive club team, but it does sometimes get a little bit tiring playing your neighbor every week and, and things like that in town. So this would give, we would, we would host things in Boone as well, but it does give that kind of travel component. But it's very recreational. Um, there's no, everybody who signs up gets to play. Uh, things like that I think are outlined in, in what I gave you, but a pretty cool opportunity. It's something that's out there that, um, we could, we could be. They do play football, volleyball, basketball, baseball, and softball. Really trying to hit that affordability to everybody involved. And, um, she's like, we're not having these juggernaut teams come in and, you know, people fifty to zero and stuff like that. It's really meant to give them a little taste of that, but as a parent, like you're still, you know, you're only gone for three, four hours. You're back home. You're not having to drive to Omaha. And you get a little bit of that travel experience and playing some different schools and, and cities as well. So, um, a couple of other things, I'm very proud to, uh, be a part of the, uh, Kiwanis here in town as of now. Um, that's, uh, been a really neat group. They, I think I attended one meeting and I was out at the expo, uh, the next week. So, uh, very happy to be a part of them. And I was also asked to be on the Board of Directors for the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association. And, uh, those are pretty fun. I hope there's an invitation possibly to help out upper billing, uh, on their committee as well. Not in stone, um, but, uh, trying to get more involved in things that are going on here. That is kind of my, my update on what's, what's plausible and happening right now. Um, talk to Ames about the trailer, the park party trailer that happens in Ames, which is basically tables, chairs. And you take the trailer to your neighborhood and have a, or neighborhood or park and you have, it's just kind of a more tables, more chairs to facilitate a, a park party or neighborhood party. So looked at that as well. Trailers aren't cheap. That's what I found out pretty quick there. But, um, lots of other things, obviously, looking at, you know, kind of two, two streets, two avenues to travel here, if we have facilities and if we don't. But both things can happen at the same time as well. Are there any questions for me?
Good work.
Lots, lots of good ideas.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, G Engineer, uh, right over to Bill.
Thank you, sir. Uh, on the agenda tonight is resolution three eight four for accepting engineers' notice of accepting.
Thank you, sir. Uh, on the agenda tonight is resolution three eight four for accepting engineers' notice of acceptability of work and final pay request for the Story Street project downtown. I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, a motion to approve would be great.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Soho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Wolfebek?
Yes.
Good, uh, H. Public Safety Chief Adams.
Yes, your honor, this one item uh, is uh, the burn ban obviously is still in effect. Daily, we get multiple calls asking when we're going to take it out. Um, I can tell you for the foreseeable future, obviously, everybody has seen the forecast. Uh, there is no uh, uh, end in sight for the dry weather, so we will reassess. We know there will be a period that we'll be able to probably take a, at looking, uh, take a look at taking it out. Uh, but we're going to have to get past a lot of uh, this harvest that still is going on as part of the whole process of looking at the burn ban. So any questions, let me know.
Uh, Chief Weevil.
Yes, your honor. Uh, this Thursday is our trunk retreat downtown, uh, is a fundraiser for shop with a cop. Uh, this year, um, uh, the idea of the fire department and with the generosity, generosity of fairway, we'll be serving hot dogs downtown, fire department, police department together. So um, along with candy and everything else went down there. So if you have kids, bring them down. If you have a trunk, bring some candy down. And I don't have the date off the top of my head. Seven, seven. Thank you.
Billy, shop with cop, right?
I have a record number of organizations that are part of this week, so very excited.
Thank you. Uh, I, uh, Assistant City Administrator Andrea.
Uh, just a couple of things on the consent agenda I want to make a note of. Um, the catalyst BDF grant for ten oh three Marshall Street is in there. Um, you guys approved the template uh, last conference meeting, so there's the first one that um, that we need to approve. And then the automatic system, SCADA control um, upgrade. That SCADA control or the system is twenty plus years old. The controls needed updated due to issues of getting um, parts. Uh, the cash for that is coming from fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, so that will require a budget and then in twenty twenty-five. Any questions? Okay, that's all I got.
James, City Administrator, Bill.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of updates. Uh, the closing date for the right of way purchase from Nittobal is October thirty-first. At that time, we'll own that and we'll move forward, obviously, with that road uh, as far as design and everything like that. Second is the Ames Regional Alliance Annual Luncheon. It's scheduled for Tuesday, December tenth at eleven AM to one PM over Cornerstone Church in Ames. Last year, we uh, got a table for this and filled it. So I'm looking for elected officials who are interested in attending that luncheon. And you don't have to let me know now, but soon, please.
I think it's a good idea for us to.
Terry.
Put me to.
Given our relationship with the alliance.
I'm out of town unfortunately, sorry.
Tuesday the tenth.
I'll be there.
December, right?
December.
December.
Out of town, sorry.
December tenth and what time?
At Cornerstone Church in Ames.
They have a really good speaker coming.
Okay.
Yes. All right, well, that's good. That's five of you. Uh, there'll probably be some staff that join you as well. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Uh, I'm in seven consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. But the request was made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Make the motion for proof.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Soho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Wolfebek?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, number eight ordinances, A first reading ordinance uh, twenty-three thirteen to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the deer regulations and the code of ordinances to prohibit deer, chapter fifty-five amendments by adding section fifty-five point three zero.
Second.
Please call roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Soho Kelly? Mormon?
Yes.
Wolfebek?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Okay, number nine, uh, mayor's comments. Okay. Turn the lights on. Uh, so, uh, discussed, confirm, final transition to four-way stop downtown. Um, we had a couple of public comments on this already. Councilman Mormon uh, printed out some comments that he received. Um, there are a variety of them here. Um, anyway, uh, before council, I got downtown business owners urging us to commit to four-way stops with a physical stop sign. Uh, I think a lot of the concerns that are occurring now seem to be resolved by officially committing to the stop sign itself rather than the flashing light, but like to discuss with you all about that.
And with all due respect to the two gentlemen that spoke, um, the overwhelming consensus that I got based on this feedback was they liked the four-way stops. Um, they were concerned with the flashing.
Right.
Because it's confusing, like Tom said, when you, and I taught myself doing this, going up to Eleventh Street, you stop. You know, i- i- it's just a reflex thing, but I think the stop signs downtown, if we switch over to stop signs like we plan to, will eliminate that problem, hopefully. Either that or we turn Eleventh Street into a hallway stop as well.
We can look at that down the road as well. There's something, so now, you know, that is with the, the narrow, narrow streets are good for safety because it makes people go slower. And with the angle parking making the street narrower, it's good to keep people at a slower top speed.
Can just get trucks, crew cabs up to park there, we'd be fine.
Right, yeah.
In general.
Well, even so, I mean.
They don't make red cab trucks anymore, barely.
We were over in Galena, Illinois this weekend. Those streets are pretty darn narrow and everybody just goes slower. It's statistically proven thing that you just have to take your time, even if you have to go a little further.
But it was overwhelming in favor of it. I mean, that, with, with a few comments.
Of course.
Just, I mean, I ca- I like the way they are now, but why don't we stay with our original idea of, weren't we going to just go through winter and see how it goes? It's just been two months, let's let it settle in.
The, the problem that is, is occurring is um, there tends to still too much confusion about what's going on. Um, and the flashing itself is, is apparently sending a mixed signal uh, for lack of a better term. And so I'm getting repeated comments and questions weekly, even though it's been asked and answered.
They were, well, actually in unison, it wouldn't be so bad, but the way they flash now, it looks like they're broken. So I.
Right, yeah.
It looks like they're broke.
Don't want yellow because we want people to stop.
So if you go to a stop sign, are you going to do away with a flashing red and just add stop signs?
That would be the suggestion, yes.
So no lights at all to make, I don't know, no colored lights, just a stop sign.
Correct.
Till eleven, right?
Till eleven, we'll leave eleven the same way, as, as a regular stoplight.
Eleven and maybe, yeah.
Correct.
I'm for the consensus of the council, but that was just my.
No, I under- I understand. That was the plan. I think it's just, I had to put it on the agenda because there's just still so much misunderstanding about the situation.
People don't want to take their turn. That's thing now, I'll say, that's what happened to
Well, we need.
We write a few tickets, they'll fall in line.
Pedestrian and crosswalk signs. We need that stuff up there, that, that friendly reminder.
And there's a, yeah, in Councilman Mormon's diagram here, he includes uh, a yellow sign on the pole to emphasize yielding. But a crosswalk is a crosswalk. And if you go down to like Ames Campus, you know, in Iowa State, you drive through there, there are no stoplights. There are stop signs everywhere and the pedestrians know, when you're on the crosswalk, you're on the crosswalk and you have to right away.
Right.
But we have a couple. Yeah, you can pass that.
I got one too.
Can I ask for some input?
I mean, negligible, I'm sure.
Uh, chief, have we had any like accidents? You feel like it slowed anything down or picked anything up down there or?
I think it definitely, um, believe it or not, it actually, I saw, I, I see a lot of the social media comments and how it slows traffic down too much and it actually speeds traffic up while keeping speeds slower, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. True, true.
Through downtown quicker now than if you had a stop waiting for a stoplight. However, your speeds, speeds are slower because you're stopping every block. So it's kind of a win-win in a lot of ways, uh, having the four-way stops.
What's your recommendation?
I like it. Frankly, I like the four-way stops, however, the council decided whether it's my sign or my light. I don't have a problem with it. I think the, I think the code and everything is clear that flashing the lights being stopped, but apparently that's been fairly difficult. Tom, Tom, I want to see you afterwards. I got a ticket for you, buddy.
Terry, one too.
Yeah. I got one coming.
I could wait to give Terry one for a long time.
We're going to have to be taken out of the way when you plow snow.
We, we will not be doing stop signs in the intersections. They would be on the, on the honors themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be my one recommendation, does not have to be.
We'll talk a little bit about snow.
Baylen, can you give your input on this? What do you think?
My opinion and feeling, um, I did, did listen to the comments of constituents earlier. I feel that the, the stops keep people at an even pace and even canter as they come through there. And I do believe when, the closer you get to the corner, it possibly alleviates you to be able to back into that spot instead of multiple vehicles being stopped at a traffic light or a red light that, you know, they could stack up three or four, five deep and you wouldn't get that spot to back out or that chance to back out. Um, one of the things that I have uh, noticed and, and kind of absorbed to watch as the traffic comes, we had to move some of these lanes and adjust them and equalize them to three equal lanes to do things. And people are, are scared coming around the corner if there's an extended cab pickup sitting there or something. So they will stop partially in the middle of the intersection and wait for the traffic to be able to move and blend through there. With a four-way stop, that allows the next person to move. Um, that you don't have somebody coming up behind them on a green light honking or waiting for them to move and, and take their turn through. I, I think it paces itself well and I, I, this would be my, four-way stop would be mine.
Is there any um, consideration if we do see population growth with our Daisy Project and kind of the anticipation of what we're going to see, that this would still work for if downtown gets more busy, more traffic? Still going to be as effective as lights?
You look at downtown Ames, it's stop signs all the way.
Same thing.
It's even the largest cities in their red, in their commercial districts.
And they all.
They want to keep.
Take their turns.
Exactly. Such a change.
Webster City has a similar downtown style to ours and it's, it's four-way stop everywhere.
It is. It's incredibly common.
When, when we removed the turning lanes. Think about it, taking a left-hand turn, if we put the lights back into action, if you, somebody was making left-hand turn, you could sit through one or two.
Forever.
Yeah, you'd have to sit through one or two lights to get through the thing. So that, that's the only problem with the turning lanes gone, it makes it a little problematic.
But what action do you need?
Uh, I like four-way blinking, if you were. Or the four-way stop.
So what I need from council is direction for staff to proceed with uh, changing over when possible, when we get signs.
Are we going to remove the lights?
It's up to council's decision discretion. I did want to have a little discussion about snow removal and then let you guys know that I will be changing policy or changing our operations uh, pending your guys' approval for snow removal. Um, as I've observed, I don't believe there's room for a window of snow down the middle of Story Street.
No way.
Yeah, no way.
Um, we're going to attempt with the equipment we have right now to move that window of snow or the snow from Story Street down to sixth, seventh or respectively eighth or ninth, you know, move it off that window and get it moved. We'll see how it goes with the equipment we have. I, I may, may come and ask later for different equipment. But we'll see, see what it is. Uh, I've talked to Bill and Andrea about it. I think it's best just to try to work through this first year. Uh, I do have a piece of equipment that will move it greatly. I don't know if it'll place it where I need it. Um, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Can't you just shove it into the parallel parking lane and remove it like the next night like you usually do?
We'll try to get it completely out of the block.
Okay.
Um, but I think that's my goal right now.
Sound good.
So.
I think we proceed with the stop sign.
To his point, I'd just like to say, I think you, at this point, if you're going, if we're going to move forward with this, we remove the, the lights, it'll look cleaner.
Yeah.
Less confusing.
Yep, I do, I think so too.
Professional, so that.
There's no confusion.
I don't want somebody standing there from that crosswalk.
Yeah, well, we got a, a light that's not working, but there's a stop, you know.
There's no crosswalk buttons down.
And it'll just be cleaner.
Pending the, the finances for the project have been expended. Public Works crews can definitely remove the lights. I can't tell you what timeline we're looking at. We can work on one intersection at a time.
Just do it when you have the time to do it.
I will put a plan together. I will talk to our traffic engineer a little bit. Presumably, right now, all we'll have to do is tuck the wires back into the pole. There will be some faded spots where some of the bracketry hung. Uh, we'll just have to patch things together and.
Yeah, I don't think that's top priority. It's.
So you're, are you talking about leaving the arms though?
Leaving all the arms, leaving all the wires, leaving all the structure there, just taking the light brackets.
Yeah, but I, do we want to do that? I feel like it would be better off just to take the arms off.
I.
Just leave the streetlights.
Yeah, I like, I like the fact that they're up there with those signs.
I think if you're going to clean it up, let's clean it up and make it look like it's supposed to be a four-way stop, not.
It would in my opinion, to leave the arm and mount up a sign from the top of it.
Yeah.
Me, right now, we have very wide intersections at Key or at Arden.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hard to get on the corner, see in the corner that there's.
There are stop signs on the corner posts. But the minute we remove that four-way stop in the middle to plow snow, it becomes free for all. Kind of shocking. It's shocking. That's not in there, but just keep.
I just think the more signage we have, the more app people are to follow it.
We, we took, we took some bracketry down that used to say left turn yield on green. Uh, those, those are the same brackets that would be changed. Probably have to purchase a few more. There'll be a little expense, but most of it can be absorbed through Public Works if you guys so choose.
We have city attorney needs that.
Yeah, um, this may very well require an ordinance change, so I will prepare that and bring it forward if EB, but I assume the consensus is that's the direction you want to go.
I, I would also probably say, being that city staff is going to undertake this position, we spring, you know, I, I, I can't tell what, what's going to happen, how much, when or what going to happen, stuff like that. So send a date to it or whatnot, I, I.
Right. Consensus that that's the direction we want to go ultimately.
I would agree.
At, at the ability of staff to undertake the actual commencement of it.
And do it on your timeline.
But I think it holds it. So be able to send the message, that's the end goal that.
Yeah.
And then we can start the wheels in motion.
I agree.
Agreed.
Do we need like something for pedestrians in case they're having a hard time getting across it? You know, like we have on twenty-second street.
The flashing lights?
With, with Terry's diagram there, it does find, it's a state law. I, I don't flash. And I think that's, that brings back the.
And that's just, people need to be patient.
It just.
And pedestrians need to, to know they have the right of way, period, end of story. When they are in the crosswalk, you just go. When you're in these bigger places, when there are a lot of cars, but it's all a crosswalks, you will have people just go out because that's their right. And I just don't think people are used to that yet. But it's absolutely end of story, their right to be in a crosswalk and walk across it safely. And keeping the speeds low is an important part.
Just like with any change, it takes a while to get used to. It'll take the public a while to get used to it. Okay.
Yes.
Have the direction?
I think you can go ahead and pass a resolution to approve it in case we don't need to make an ordinance change. That way it's in place, but if we need to do the ordinance, I'll bring it back.
I would like, I would like council to act on it.
So you want a motion?
Yes, correct.
I would like him, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Hansen?
Yes.
Soho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Wolfebek?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Thank you all. Um, the um, discussion, construction of an application for homeowner, homeowner tree planting and the right of way parking. This is another item that's come up many, many times and a lot of. many, many times and a lot of confusion surrounding it and even Mike is expressed some confusion about the fact that he can't find an application for anybody to even attempt to, to plant a tree in the right-of-way. Um, and I know that's something that we haven't allowed. Um, but there's no mechanism even for the homeowner as far as he can tell and I, I know of for a homeowner to even request that. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, you know, I guess I don't care either way if we allow it or not.
Right.
I would just like something that I can fall back on. Is it a policy or is it a set in stone that we're not planting trees or I, I'd just like a level.
Board? Are they in charge of that?
Oh.
Well, it becomes the park department responsibility, right? If they plant them in the park. It, it's your responsibility if they plant them in the parking. Right?
Yeah, so I, what I would suggest, kind of what I have this worded here is allow them to create an application for homeowners to request that.
Requested.
And they can take a look at it to see if it's.
It was counted. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, we have that already. They can make an application to plant a tree and, and they accept responsibility for it, all of those things. Did you look at that? Have?
No.
Because we've approved, we've approved plantings in the past. And they take responsibility for that and we actually record those documents.
And there's an agreement.
I'll, I'll say that to you.
So it already exists and.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Great.
Okay.
Or, or a permit says it requires a permit from the urban forester. I have never seen, and it costs fifteen dollars and I've never seen one, so I guess I'd like to know if we're going to issue permits or not, or if they could purchase permits.
And ultimately it would be the decision of the park commission, whether they, they do allow it or not.
Yes, that's, that's what we've done.
So does that help? I mean, so if you can get that document, Jim, and i- if there's not enough, you know, perhaps you could request the ability to make something to flesh it out.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just a matter of getting clarity on the situation, but does that help you out?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
How does that work if somebody, oh, if you, if they submit the thing, they plant the tree, they say, we'll take care of it. And five years later, they move to the next person, then also have to sign a thing?
No, that's why we record it. It goes with the property.
With the property, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an application for removal of a tree in the parking?
There is also supposedly a permit to to remove a tree.
Yeah, I went through the process many years ago at my house, but I don't ever remember an application. I just went to the, the park board and got on the agenda. And I didn't know if there was a, you know, a more formal way to do that.
It's, you know, it worked okay.
Yeah.
But, um, read the ordinance and then look for practice. I just want to be able to go back to something writing.
Does this go to us or does it go to the park?
Park Commission.
Okay, so he needs to work with his board on getting something?
Okay. We, and you know, when, when you have that information, um, if you want to put out a statement that clarifies the process for everybody, I think that would be everybody's best interest to forward that along. So there, because I've gotten asked about it many, many times. It's hard to tell people.
Oh, I get a lot of requests.
Yeah.
I've actually had several, uh, plantings in the right-of-way lately with no permit or request at all. So I want to be able to.
Yeah, if we can get, if we can get people the information on how to do it the right way.
It's normally, everybody, even if it's so freaking cold.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Good. Um, all right, uh, next, anything more on that apartment piece? I think we're good. Okay, uh, see resolution, uh, thirty-two ninety authorizing the execution of a Main Street Iowa program continuation agreement between the Iowa Economic Development Authority, the city of Boone and downtown Boone Main Street.
The only concern that I have with this, and I don't know, you, there's a couple of Main Street people here. Do you know when the deadline is for this contract to be ratified? Okay. Um, the only concern I have about this is, is that if you read through the IEDA, uh, contract, there is no provisions in there for any accountability to the city regarding the funds that we have designated for them. Now, I know we've already passed by resolution the funding for this project. But I would like to see it tabled until we can formulate a contract with them. It's no different than a BDF grant or a downtown incentive grant.
It's a local Boone five oh one C three.
Right. Correct. Yes, thank you. Um, Andre and I have talked a little bit about this, about formulating a contract that the state auditor's office is really kind of hell-bent on having contract agreements for any time a city distributes funds. Um, and right now we don't have anything. Like I said, the, if you read through the IEDA contract, it really doesn't make any provisions for that. I just don't want to affect your timeline with this vision, but, um, I would really like to table this for now. Have Andrea put together a, a rough draft of a contract similar like, like I said, to BDF and the downtown incentive grant that provides with some accountability to us as to how those funds are being spent. Um, if that's okay, I would make a motion to table this for now, uh, pending any other discussion that you might have.
Okay. Yeah, um, so, Andre, could you add a little bit more about the conversation, concern and things like that?
Sure.
Might have.
Um, over the, about the last two years at conferences, it has been really stressed upon us on clerks and finance officers whenever giving out funding, um, for like your hotel motels, your local option self-text, which we do human service with. Um, anytime you're giving out money, it should be to a five oh one C three. And then on a, on top of that, there should be some kind of contract with that specifying where those funds are going. Um, and a follow-up on how those funds were spent and what the public purpose was for those funds. Um, this year, actually, a few months ago, I, um, contacted, um, our city auditor and asked if he's getting the same kind of, um, message when he's going through his trainings. And he also agreed that that's what they have been pushing also. And, and you guys know that, um, we've, we've had to go through special, uh, audit with the state. Um, so they are looking at us very closely. So that was part of the reason why I did those, um, catalyst grants, the BDF grants. Um, because we need those contracts. And actually I have a, uh, example for the hotel motel and the option self-text that I'll also be bringing forward for this year.
You already have that?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Um, just one question. Do, is it possible to enter into this agreement without having a contract, but with the contract in place before distribution of future funds?
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I'm just asking.
Yeah. Say that again?
So enter into this, uh, agreement, um, between Main Street Iowa, uh, local downtown Boone Main Street and us.